At this time, I'd like to call our regular meeting to order and of course, to wish you all a Happy New Year as this is our first meeting of the new year. At this time, we have with us Pastor Ellen McCubbin from Hope Mills United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation and be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you all will, please rise.
Let us pray. Holy God, as we start this new year together, remind us that with service and care of others before our personal preferences. Help us to remember that everyone around us is stressed, Lord. Stressed from job frustrations, stressed from inflation, stressed from COVID. Guide us to be servant leaders in our town that you want us to be. Let our town be known as a safe, loving, and welcoming place. In all things, Lord, we trust you and we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions from our agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, we have official comments and I will start with Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you all are here tonight, that you made it through the holiday without an accident or something going wrong. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Years. I hope you had a nice Christmas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
Again, like Commissioner Legg just said, want to thank you all, first of all, for coming out and wish you all a very, very blessed new year. And let this be a very positive, effective, and beneficial year for us all.
Thank you. Commissioner Marley?
Just echo what was said and just ready to get to work this year.
Okay. Commissioner Searle?
Same thing that all the other commissioners are saying, Happy New Year and...
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Oh, just echo the same thing everybody else has said. Thank you for all being here and looking forward to a productive year. And be safe.
And be safe. Alrighty. Well, again, we thank you for coming this evening and thank you for the family of our new police chief. We are gonna, at this time, we're going to, actually, we're gonna do what we are gonna call as a ceremonial swearing in because we have been very fortunate to have our police chief onboard since before Christmas. And the reason for that, again, was to get our new year started off right. So, at this time, I'll do our swearing in. The family will come up. We have the Bible and we have the oath. We will do our swearing in of our new police chief. And anyone that would like to stand with him can come forward and ask his wife to hold the Bible for him. Everyone can come up. You don't have to. Anybody that's part of this family can come on down. Officer, do you want to come too? In support of him, because we believe in this is a, our town is, we want everybody to know, he has not only support, but he has strong family support also. And if you will, raise your right hand to collect him on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Stephen Dolger.
I, Stephen Dolger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
And vigilant to enforce.
And vigilant to enforce.
If criminal laws of this state.
If criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
On account of bias.
On account of bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
And as police chief for the town of Hope Mills.
And as police chief for the town of Hope Mills.
According to the best of my skills, abilities.
According to the best of my skills and abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard. And if you will, those of you that are here in our audience, this is his wife and this is, he has retired from New Jersey. So we might not hold that against him. We're very welcoming himself. Just welcome aboard and thank you all for coming this evening so that we can officially have this morning. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, don't we require a speech?
Would you like to say something, sir?
Well, I just want to thank the town manager and the mayor and the rest of the board of commissioners for having confidence in me and appointing me chief. I'm looking forward to working tirelessly to make the Hope Mills Police Department one of the best around. And I wanted to thank my family for supporting me and my officers from St. Paul's, where I'm coming from. And I just want to make amends to the officers that are on the lead here, to give them the support and backing they need and to do, to be a great place to work.
Thank you. Thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings. We do have public comments and at this time, I have, the first person to speak is Jeff Sports.
Board members, so first of all, start off, Jeff Sports, 14th and 15th, Brooklyn, Brooklyn Trail. Nobody, if you know who I am, I've just recently retired, taught most PD, I've done 23 and a half years of service. I want to congratulate board members, mayor, chief, on winning your seats and the chief getting a job. I'm here, want to talk about the officer's pay. Like I said, I've been with Hope Mills for the last 23 and a half years. I've just recently retired. There's a couple stories I want to talk, to mention, to make you understand about the officer's pay. We have a lot of fine officers. A lot of good officers here. I've seen what they've done day in and day out for the last 23 and a half years. With everything going on with society the last couple of years, we're fortunate. We should feel fortunate of our department that we're not in the headlines like they are. Because we have good, quality officers. And they need to be paid for. I have been part of two or three different pay studies over the years. Obviously, nothing is covered, but... With everything going on with society, like I said, you should feel that maybe we need to train the officers more. Get them better prepared, more trained to deal with the public. Well, it's kind of hard when your training budget is cut. And before I left the police department this past year, there was a number of officers who was put in for training and I had to deny it. We had no money in the training budget. So, I know a budget time is coming around, so I would ask you to please up the training budget for these officers. Again, all this doesn't benefit me. I'm retired. I'm done. It's going to benefit them. And I would ask you, when you sit down and make your final, say so on the budget this coming year, you would make sure they have their proper training money in their budget so they can have proper training. The two stories that I want to talk about was, one, I came here in 1998. When I came here in 98, there was a supervisor, had been here 16, 18 years. They were only making $2,000 more than I was. I'm brand new here. They have been here for that long and was only making $2,000. That's not right. Here recently, a few years back, there was an officer that worked here. He was here probably four, five years. He worked his way up to an FPL status. FPL is Field Training Officer. He was training a new rookie. No experience. The rookie was making more than he was. And he had been here for five years. He's training this person and this person's making more money than he is. Why? Because what we're doing, when we up our starting pay, the officer's not getting enough. They're staying right here. Federal PD recently, if you notice, they got all these promotions that they're trying to get officers to come. We don't have that. We have a good starting base, but where are they at in three, five, seven years? That's what we need to work on in the future because every year of me being here, we'll talk about it next year, talk about it next year. Wherever you are, 23 years later, we'll still talk about it. These guys and girls, they deserve better pay. I've seen what they did. So, I encourage you and I hope you guys will sit down and think about this when it comes time, the budget come. And hopefully, something will be put in place, not just their pay, if they stay here. Because they, you have a lot of officers that have been here for a while. They are loyal to you in this town. And I think if they're going to be loyal to you, they should get the same return. Have some type of play, a pay plan for them, okay? Again, I've wrote history, this town for the last 23 years, I've seen things that you should not have to see, that what we see. That's why we're out there, so you won't have to see this stuff. They deserve more pay. So, in my final, what I want to say is just please, when you do your budget, just think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service. Bill McQueen?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Bill McQueen, 5903 Honeycomb Drive. August of 1966, I got my driver's license. And to wheel around and meet somebody, I came to this town. Because we always passed on the edge of the town. I wanted to see what the atmosphere looked like. So I show up and I go to the old town hall. Walk up the stairs on the outside of the building with an eye cleaning. Because I could hear music. And I'm not too bashful. I walked up the stairs, stood in the door. And I saw kids my age come on in. And I did. It took me about an hour. When I left, I left with the understanding to myself, this is the town I'm going to raise my family in. And we did. It's been a good 37 years. What I miss right now, that I put a little hand out, good battery different, of what I'm considering a newsletter to communicate with the citizens of this town. A positive approach, I hope, that lets the community know what's going on ahead of time, answers questions. But I wanted this board to start out from a good foot of communication and spirit, art, mind, and guidance. I am 100% behind the gentleman that just spoke. My first visit in this town officially was to the board meeting to say, I have some concerns. And I was addressed in return to say, we're short of police. I don't know for sure in fact if that's where we are today. But if it is, that's almost a 40-year pattern of we're short of police. We do have excellent police in this town. I would like the town to address it as you were requesting. It's need, our society is not what it was in 1966. I read on my phone, I don't like social media, but I get news casts. How, I don't know, but I read it. During lunch, someone got shot right downtown in Fayetteville, riding his motorcycle, I think. I don't know the details. I don't... This is not out of this world. But we're dealing with things, all of us, that we should have to deal with and thank the Lord for the police. I would like you to consider what you may have read by now. Read what I've asked. 270 words addressing the citizens of what our board, our leaders, we have elected you to represent us. What will you plan to do in this next year in a positive manner? I would also tell you that if we can get a newspaper into this town, we're approached daily about there is no source to put ads in. Ads will yield discount coupons that we have a lot of folks now, big income, that I know personally shop on coupons. When you don't have it and you need it, you give it any way you can. I would like to see that come. I would like to see it grow. I come from two sides. One, I want to be the first voice of many that thanks you for what you're doing. But in the same sense, I want to help the rest of the population understand what you're doing, why you're doing it, so they can help. Maybe we can get a newspaper here. Maybe we can't. For the folks out here, if you want to see a little of what we wound up, it's like, I might be enough. It's just a old-fashioned communication that right now, our federal observer is produced out in California with the national media. We have senior citizens that do not rely on social media to read the news. So they're missing a lot of what I know the town produces. But that's a marketing concern. If you produce it and it's digital, the folks my age don't look it up on the computer. They're missing a lot of what might be helpful to them if they read it. So, again, I want to reinvent the wheel, yes. Start over and do it right, yes. I bring fond memories to this town. And I'd like to see that glory that we all feel. When people ask me, I've traveled the nation, where are you from? Hope Mills. You know that jewelry store on the back of Trade Street? No, I'm sorry, but I will, I will know when I get back home. It's amazing. We are recognized. We are the leaders in this part of the country. The business is moving here on purpose. With all the other places that could go, they're telling me they selected Hope Mills. Services, commuting to population. We are focused at a very high level. Lot of expectations. I want to be a part of helping town. If what you're ready to help you, I will be around after the meeting. I would like to help you address the public. So thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything that you'd like moved from our consent agenda or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. We have old business, no, none. New business, we have consideration of board, committee, and commission nominations. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to read off the recommendations for, that the nominating committee had for the Appearance Committee, Parks and Recreation, Prime Movers, Veterans Affairs, and we will do the Historic Committee last as there was not a, it was a split opinion on one of the members. And my request is that we bring it to the board for, and let the board vote on it. For the Appearance Committee, we recommended Kathryn Kaltavitt, Demetrius Polk, Marie Callender, Sally Bailey, and Tina Yasset. For Parks and Rec Committee, Ruben Garcia, Antonia McGill, Deanna Rosario, Marques, and Marie Callender. Hope Mills Prime Movers, Vanessa Daniels, Justin Suliman, Allison Rogers, Monica Carter, Destiny Kendall, Mitch Peterson, and Abigail Long. Recommendations for the Veterans Committee, Sean Frederick, Ronald Maury, James Morris, Jennifer Blair, and Gregory Dickerson. Historic Committee, Alice Dodd, Teresa Davis, Sharon Reeves, Pat Edwards, Denise Hughes Gaskins, Elise Craver. And it was a split opinion on Mary Elizabeth Blevins. I agreed to let Mrs. Blevins serve. Commissioner Legg did not agree and I will like to open up the floor for him to give his opinion.
Thank you, Madam Protem. The reason I brought that up is because Ms. Blevins has a history of resigning from committees. And I didn't want to see us get in the middle of something where she was needed and she had resigned to our amazement. And that's the reason that I didn't, I have nothing against Ms. Blevins. But I do have my thoughts about resigning from different committees all the time. So, it's up to this board what happens.
Madam Mayor, would you like for us to vote on the other committees and then do this one separately?
Yes, we can do that. If you would like, we'll, do I have a...
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Well, what I was going to say is we'll just make a motion to approve Appearance, Parks and Rec, Prime Movers, and Veterans Affairs committees. And realizing that those committees are short members, with the exception of Prime Movers, we still need more membership. So, but if we will, can we approve, have a motion to approve the Appearance, Parks and Rec, Prime Movers, and Veterans Affairs?
I make a motion, ma'am.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Now, on the next committee, I guess the first, the first question would be to approve, I don't know that we want to have a separate vote for individual.
You could probably have someone make a motion to approve the full slate, including Ms. Blevins, and then discussion of that motion.
Okay. So, so I have a motion to approve...
I'll put that into a motion.
Have a motion to approve the full slate. And do I have a second?
I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Now, discussion, is there anyone that has anything to add to discussion from the recommendation of Commissioner Legg? And we also have recommendation to keep from Mayor Protem. Yes, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, I, with the, with the constant resignations, do we have anything in place currently where if a person resigns X number of times, they're, no?
I don't, I believe that the most recent resignation was from Historic Preservation Committee, but we have nothing and we have people that don't attend. And we don't have anything for that either, as far as actually enforcing them to be a part of it. I think the, the main thing is, we struggle to get seven members of each committee. So, we're looking at, if you get somebody that was willing to volunteer, we try to keep them and, and also knowing that we need others for the other committees likewise. We do have one lady that's serving on two committees. So, I mean, so any other?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we look at the history of these committees, we have always been a challenge of getting people to volunteer. When we get to the point where we start saying, well, yeah, you resigned, that's the reason why some people resign from a committee. Without getting all the facts, without knowing why and what circumstances they resign. Now, it's not the time to be trying to change the rules of the game now. Let's put something in place to move forward from this day on. So, we have established rules and procedures so that everyone will know if they do not fulfill that duty and obligation to those committees that they will not be allowed to apply the next time the vacancy comes available. But I think at the state where we're at now, we need to move forward and approve the nomination of Ms. Blevins on the Historic Committee. But at the same time, I'd like to ask that we put in some new rules in place to establish that process and procedure and let them know. If you resign for any reason, you would not be allowed to apply for X amount of years. We need to put a limit, a timeline on that. How long would it be before you can apply again? And that is what I have to say about that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And I would like to say, the reason why I said that is because we don't have anything put into place. I do think we need to have, I do think it depends on what the, why the person resigned or how they resigned. And if people have a right to have their freedom of speech. But I've also been in the mindset that people that are demeaning and say derogatory things about the staff that they work with and the elect. I don't, mind you have an opinion, but the way that you carry yourself and you're representing the town, you can, you can disagree. But I also think we, we need some parameters around that. But at this current time, we don't. So, I'm like, have we had other people resign before? We let them serve on the committees before. We probably have. Now, we want to put something to place to make it more restrictive and say maybe if they resign more than two times, they can't serve on the committee for three years, five years, depending on what that is. We can do that. But at this current time, we don't have anything put into place.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask the town attorney and the town manager to work on that. And I think it's a good idea so that they know what the guidelines are. I mean, you play football with rules. Just needs to be governed the same way and be taken care of in the, in the right manner. But my problem with the last resignation, she was the chairman of her committee. People were leaning on her as their leader and the leader walked out.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or concerns?
Kind of make a motion.
Or have a motion. We have a second to approve the Historic Preservation Committee, including the members all present listed. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed?
Isn't there seven on here without?
No, she makes number seven.
She make number seven.
So, four to one.
Now, we ought to go.
Sir?
I was just going to say, if I may, it sounds like the consensus of the board is to come back with policy on the, if someone resigns. Do you want to say if they resign twice or?
I, I personally, Attorney Hartshog, I think we've had some concerns with committees being outspoken. Members of committees going on social media, media being derogatory of the board of the town. I think we need an ethics statement along with the resignation piece. So, might want to look at how we could address all of that at one time as far as, and I think Mayor Protem alluded to that also, that they represent the town and when they speak, a lot of times, they think that's what the town is saying. So, so could we carry it forward with even more to that? We don't want to just, we don't want to deter people from signing up, but at the same time, we do need some decorum.
If I recall correctly, we do have a provision in the board, the volunteer board, rules that says that they are, to make it clear, if they do speak out on social media about town issues or issues that that committee is involved in, that they make clear that they are not speaking on behalf of the town. I think that's probably a good First Amendment balance to have.
Yeah.
Is that they're allowed to speak out, but if they do, they must make clear they are not speaking on behalf of the committee or the town. And we could look at that language and see if we can tweak that a little bit to address that concern as well. And then, I would suggest that the ordinance have some provision that the board could grant a waiver in appropriate circumstances if someone needs to resign for medical reasons or some other legitimate reason, that the board could allow a waiver of that policy. So, I'll put the other, we'll bring that back.
And I think we mentioned one time before about attendance. Because we have had committee members that have been on the committee but never attended a meeting. And I mean, granted, we want, we try to keep the committees full, but maybe if we had something also in reference to attendance so that we could look for somebody as a replacement if they're not attending to share the committees.
If I recall correctly, I believe we do have a provision about attendance in the current rules.
Yes, we do.
I can't recall.
Just enforcing it now.
Enforcing it because the issue.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor. Okay, I'm sorry. Madam, if you don't mind, I would like to offer my services because I wrote rules, regulations, policies, and procedures for the mil, for the military. And I left very little room for wiggle room, you know, so I'd be more than welcome to offer my services, happy hour with that.
Okay. Alrighty.
And Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to say that if we could maybe go over those policies and procedures with all of the members, maybe in a march meeting. And it was also a suggestion from another citizen, if we can maybe bring all of the... And it was also a suggestion from another citizen, if we can maybe bring all of the committees together later on this year, maybe in March or so, to kind of talk about priorities and goals for the year, and maybe see if there's some things that we can work on together. And maybe that also give us some time, some time to maybe establish and go over those guidelines for everybody, so that all of the committee members know that they're, everything is clear and everybody's being told the same thing at the same time. Because I think we have some of these things, like with attendance, but then we don't, we don't follow through with them.
Okay, alright. Alrighty then. Alright, next, we have our managers' report. Do we have anything to add to that, or is there any questions?
So I did have the department heads add a little bit of information that was requested. I did get informed that the rate will be lowered starting January tenth, because of how old the rain recently. And they're given the installing of level gauge, a lot of low meter, the stadium's on the bridge. And it'll be the eighteenth to the twentieth of January, they're going to be doing the second one in addition. I don't believe there's any talks that are going to happen. So a lot of those projects and questions that I, I received were about properties and things that are in the MIA that we don't have permits on, and they upgraded, and they have done some property work. They aren't necessarily things that are in our court yet, so staff doesn't know. Those are detailed in the report, but if you have questions on that, the department's heads are here, if you want specifics.
Do we have any questions? Okay. Alright. Next, we have updates on committee activities. And I guess if, if you haven't met, we, we wouldn't have anything, but if you have, Commissioner Marley, you have anything? Okay.
I have one thing, that the, the next meeting, it says, is on the January twelfth. Are we going to be gone? So I won't be able to make that meeting, but their next meeting is on the twelfth of January.
So with their?
Madam Mayor, I think all of us will be gone at that period of time, is that correct?
Yep, in fact. That's the only committee meeting, though, that will be meeting during that time, that timeframe.
I have a question.
Okay.
Since this, this should be our last meeting that we will attend as sitting commissioners, committee chairs, right? Or do we start with the new meeting, starting this month? Because they got out.
Their current terms run through the end of January.
Right.
And the new, new term starts February.
Right, February first, yes.
Thought so.
So as far as the January twelfth meeting, the others are meeting. Someone, is that a meeting that we could look at, maybe scheduling at a different time, so that then the liaison could be there?
They won't be there either.
Generally, that's between the liaison and the chair.
Okay, so we'll let Commissioner Marley work that out. How about that? Okay. Alrighty. The, do you have anything? Well, you really haven't had a meeting at all. Neither have you. Mayor Protem, if you've got anything with Parks and Rec?
Nothing with Parks and Rec, but, but Prime Movers. We did have a, a meeting, not with the Quorum, over the, the break. And one of the things that we talked about was doing a day of service in Hope Mills on MLK Day on Monday the seventeenth. I don't know exactly what the day of service, it can be a variety of things, it can be helping with the alm's house, it could be with the the highway pickup, just a number of things that you want to do to help service the community. And there's also an MLK prayer breakfast at the Cumberland County Coliseum, and we will be purchasing tickets to represent Hope Mills. Where we purchase them individually, just so the Prime Movers can attend. Some of them, many of them have never attended before, and to represent Hope Mills. So I did want to say that, they're busy, they're still busy over the break. But I think those are the only updates that we have.
Okay. Mayor's Youth Leadership Committee, we did meet this evening, we had twenty-three in attendance, we did it virtually. We chant, chant, thank Mr. McLaughlin for setting that up for us, but because school isn't going to be virtual this week, we decided, and they, pretty much the kids helped decide that too. But we've got a great group, great agenda going on, and they've got, setting their committees up. So looks like we're in store for another good year with our youth being involved. Mid-Carolina Council of Governments did have a meeting with them, it was just a, a general meeting going over the monies that came from the state to them. And then Transportation Board and FCDC has not met. Any staff comments? Alrighty then. Then at this time, we have on our agenda closed session, and I'll ask Mayor Protem for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS one-four-three, three-eighteen-eleven, eight-six, to discuss a personnel matter. And NCGS one-four-three, three-eighteen-eleven, eight-three, attorney firm privilege.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We'll be moving to the front conference room. I will return as quick as we can, and we appreciate everyone's attendance. If you're not here when we get back, just know that our next meeting will be January the eighteenth. We will not meet on the Monday, we'll meet the Tuesday after the Martin Luther King Day. Okay, so we'll all go to the front conference room. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. And do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the seal, the minutes of the closed session to such as the time the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further, no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, we'll see you all in June, January twelfth.